Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the city's, uh, City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashworld.gov/agenda or they're found at the back, uh, in that back table. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Rensland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or question, questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Excuse me, Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Um, Roach.
She is excused this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. And with that, would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for that. And with that, we'll move on with our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by city council and will be enacted by rule call vote as one motion. Um, there will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A, approval of meeting minutes July 17th and July 24th. Item B, bills and communications approving claims in the total amount of eight million six hundred and forty-six thousand eighty-two and eighty-six cents. Item C, number, resolution number forty-three sixty-four, amendment number one of the prosecutorial services agreement with Rio Fols P L L C. Item D, Civil Service Commission Personnel Board Appointment of Todd Roper. Item E, Parks and Rec Advisory Board Appointment of Michael Harrington. Item F, Pasco Public Facilities District Board Reappointment of Carolyn Bowdish. And item G, Tri-City Regional Motel, Hotel Motel Commission Reappointment of Monica Hamburg. And with that, uh, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Milne, and can I get roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And we move on to our next item on the agenda. Item number five, proclamations and acknowledgements non-listened. However, I do want to share real quick that we did have a proclamation read last Saturday for the Pasco Peru consulate for their two-hundred-second, uh, Day of Independence. And I'll elaborate that more in the comment section. Item number six, public comment, uh, public.
Madam Mayor, if I, just for the proclamations and acknowledgements.
Yeah.
I know that we've, uh, for the consulate, I just want to take the time, is there a way that we can, I know we just did the consent agenda, but just we've got some of our volunteers, we just give five seconds to acknowledge that these guys did a great job on the interviews and thank you so much for showing up tonight.
Thank you. Yes, if you'd like to raise your hand, those of you have, that have been appointed or reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to our next item on the agenda, the public comment. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide venue for debate or for posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a member, from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes. Each, um, three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages, method, messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meeting minutes. And with that, I would like to advise everyone to please put your phones on mute or shut them down. And we also have a fancy new timer right here, right in front of, uh, Debbie. So keep your eye out for that timer for your three-minute mark. And with that, anyone that has a comment, please raise your hand, step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thomas here in the front and then gentleman in the back. Can you turn on your mic?
Good evening, uh, staff and council, uh, thank you for having me here. Thomas Grandbois, Big Maple Properties, uh, 108 North Fourth Avenue. Uh, like the new clock there, it hasn't started yet, though. And also, there's one right here for reference as well, so we can really see that it's on. Um, I know that quite often you guys are lightning rod for complaints, so I wanted to have tonight be a little bit more positive. As you know, I spend a lot of time in downtown Pasco. And I want to say, uh, I really want to commend Chief Roski and what's been going on the last, say, two months. We've noticed an incredible change in the downtown. And I want to thank the chief very much for him and his staff and the regular faces that we see working down there for PD. And in addition, I want to thank Director Rice. Uh, man, it's seeing the things that he's been doing in, in Peanuts Park has been incredible. Thank you very much, and I'm sure other parks, but I just, that's where I spend all my time. So thank you so very much. And also, uh, his communication is top-notch. So thank, thank you so much. And, um, I had another, oh, and I wanted to comment on another thing is as I spend time downtown, a lot of people come up and ask me what's going on because they know that I'm here every single Monday night. And they, they want to know, you know, why certain things can or can't happen. And I think that, uh, right now, the communications team is doing an excellent job with, uh, the short video clips. They're really great. Um, I think it'd be really valuable to put out a video saying, hey, you know, this is what council members can do or can't do. Because every council has their own structure that they can and can't do. For example, I, it's my understanding that you can't, you all can't just direct an individual staff member to do X, Y, Z. As much as I'm sure sometimes you would like to, because people come up to you and say, hey, why, why isn't this happening? So I think that that would be a really valuable one, two-minute blurb, just saying, hey, this is what council, this is council's role, and this is staff's role, and this is how to communicate with staff. Um, because you had, you do have the tools. You have incredible tools like Ask Pasco, which gets both the council members and the appropriate departments. I'm a, I'm sure I'm one of the top, top users on there. And, uh, you look at, at the folks, the, the Great Media Bateman guys, they do an incredible job on there. Chad and his team, I always get good comments back from him as well. I know, uh, Councilmember Maloney, you've mentioned that, that you've painted something and it gets cleaned up. And just last week, we painted some graffiti and it was gone within forty-five minutes, which is absolutely incredible. And then, uh, so I have thirty seconds here, I really appreciate that clock. Um, I wanted to also mention the, uh, Building Code Enforcement Department. Um, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, but they have contracted out with a, with somebody to clean the downtown, which we really, really appreciate. Uh, he's top-notch, so I really want to thank, uh, Rosanna and Troy for building that relationship because seeing, seeing Nacho and his guys out there is really, really great every single morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton? If you want to turn on your mic, please?
Is that on? Can you hear? Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Joe Thornton. I am here on behalf of Clubhouse Sports Academy. Uh, I am, uh, the founder of the Big Bro Joe Foundation, a local mentoring group that mentor young males in the community. I'm also a gym owner and partner, uh, here at Clubhouse Sports Academy. Um, I've had a conversation recently, uh, via Zoom with Lynn Carson, uh, the director of Gemini Corpse. Uh, we've been speaking on behalf of addressing youth and recreational activities. Um, Clubhouse Sports Academy is located at sixty-six hundred, uh, Boulevard, uh, Burden Boulevard here in Pasco. We have over thirty-nine square feet, thirty-nine thousand square feet of use of space for youth, uh, kids here in Pasco, the city of Pasco. Uh, we look into actually partnering with the city of Pasco. Uh, we want to provide more fitness activities, fitness programs, uh, make it cost-effective, and become the epicenter of Pasco's, uh, recreational activities. Uh, we locate it right here off Road 68 again. Uh, bringing more attraction to that area will actually help boost a local economy. As you can see, uh, the pamphlet that was passed around this nice little brochure. Uh, if you read inside, we kind of did a market breakdown of the area. Uh, you see the, the size of the facility, the activities that we can offer, if we can possibly come together as a community and do more for our youth. Again, I am a, uh, a founder of a youth mentoring program, and the city of Pasco is an area that's in need. Um, I work closely with, uh, the chi, the chief, uh, the city of Pasco police officers, and we all kind of came to an agreement that we need to find a place, uh, to call home for youth fitness and recreational activities. Um, I'm a former collegiate football player. Sports has been the pillar of my life. It taught me a lot of discipline. It taught me how to build self-esteem, character, uh, attributes that we look for as far as moving forward and looking out for the future. Um, I believe fitness and sports is very important in the young lives of our community members as far as our kids concerned, um, even parents. Um, I'm a trainer, I've been a certified personal trainer for over twelve years now, and I've seen what it can do to get people involved, get people moving, longevity, be around your family. I also just organized event called the Tri-Cities Family Fit Day Event, which promote active living and, and active health, uh, healthy lifestyles here in the communities. I believe a partnership with the city Parks and Recs and Clubhouse Sports Academy can really do something positive for our community and do something positive for our, our young kids that's in the area today. So I need the support, we need the support of the city to create more programs and activities and facilitate programs that can actually help build our youth. Um, that's very important here in, here in the city of Pasco, and I think it's the area that we definitely need to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead and step up to the microphone. Oh, if you can turn on the microphone. There you go.
There. My name is Michael Harrington, and I've just been nominated and I guess accepted to be the, serve on the Parks and Recreation Board. And, uh, I, uh, I bring two things to the table. One of, one of them is a terrific amount of ignorance. You know, I don't, and I'm not really sure what this job is going to bring. Um, but I'm also going to bring a lot of desire to help. You know, I really like Pasco, I love our city. I spend a lot of time in our parks, and I, I'm grateful for this opportunity to maybe make things just a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments, um, and thank you for putting to good use our brand-new timer. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Item number seven, reports from comedians and/or officers. Um, do any of our council members wish to share anything, um, that happened in the past two weeks? Councilman Milne.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you know, we did go out on the National Night Out last week. Went with Chief Roski and some of the other fine officers, Officer Decker, who was out, I was paired with. And we got to go to some great parties, interact with the community. Had a good time at, uh, Councilman Brown's party, and, uh, also did Leo Peralos. And then at the end, we met up with Mr. Campos and Councilman Campos and, uh, with, uh, Terra Vida, and got to watch some dancing, and, uh, again, all the parties were very good food, and it was great just to get out and meet our neighbors, and it was a very pleasant evening, and I had a really good time. And so just want to appreciate staff and Police Department and everybody for helping us, uh, get around in a timely manner, and, uh, it was really good.
Thank you for sharing, anyone else? I'll share real quick. Um, it's been a very busy, uh, last two weeks. We did not have a meeting last Monday due to it being the fifth. But yes, just want to piggyback a little bit on what Councilman Milne said. Um, National Night Out, one of our most anticipated community, uh, get-togethers. There was four parties this year, four block parties this year. Uh, Councilman Brown was, uh, one of those parties that we had. Then, uh, Neighborhood Block Watch, uh, also organized one not too far from Councilman Brown's. Then we had, uh, another, um, Neighborhood Block Watch area over in, uh, Road 68, um, um, the west Pasco area. And then to end the day, the evening, uh, is the bigger ones that we always anticipate and say for last. The Terra Vida Community, um, always puts on a great event, huge event. Uh, that's where we get our pictures for our flyers, I see. Um, it was a great event, it was great community, uh, assistance, attendance. Um, everyone had fun and everyone was fed great food. Um, with that, I also want to share that, um, like I shared a little bit ago, um, it was, um, Pasco Peru's two-hundred-second, um, Independence Day. Um, Councilman Brown and myself went over to Seattle to the consulate to help celebrate. We read a proclamation to them. Um, they had been here, um, in early February, if I'm not mistaken, um, and in hopes to share and create a partnership with Pasco-Washington. They did, um, surprise me with a medal. And so I bring that medal here to share with you all. I want to pass it down that way. Um, a medal that is awarded, this is the fourth medal they've awarded. Um, uh, the great-grandfather of the consulate, Mr. Velazquez, was part of the war. And, um, and so the original medal was lost during the war. Uh, the Velazquez family sponsored the recreation of the medal. Um, and so this has been issued out and awarded to, uh, recipients. The recipients that have, have been awarded this medal is for their valor and their resiliency to put forth, um, uh, you know, the people, the community, and everyone it represents or they represent. And so I was honored with this medal. It was, it was very emotional, um, and I'm, I'm proud to share it with you all. Um, Councilmember Brown, do you have some comments?
Um, just kind of piggybacking a little bit, National Night, it was so much fun, I think. It was so much fun, so I thank everyone who participated, who supported, who showed up. It was last minute running around, but it was worth it, I'll tell you. We had a good time. Uh, again, I don't want to call names, but everyone that was there, you know, I appreciate you, I love you for showing up. Um, the neighborhood was, was, uh, was very excited. I'm still getting good reviews from that night. So to all the other, um, addresses that signed up, thank you for signing up. It's important to sign up. I hope next year, there's more families or, um, neighborhood, uh, groups of people that sign up because it's important that we get to know our neighbors and come outside and, um, enjoy one another and build those relationships among each other to continue having a great city. But it takes all of us to do that. So National Night, that's really important, so it was very, very nice to everyone that showed up. It was a lot of fun. We had, um, Chief Roski dancing a little bit, so, uh, it was fun. He's always in it for one, so that was good. Um, just my BF COG meetings are going really well. Um, a lot of information, um, is coming from BF COG. I can't get into all my computers, as you see, I've got a lot going on here, but the meetings are great. Um, they're healthy meetings, um, and I'm just privileged to be a part of those, uh, BF COG meetings. And then just a little piggyback on the hospitality. Myself and Mayor Blanch received, um, from the Peru family, I'll call them, um, from Pasco to Pasco. What a great sistership that we're beginning. Um, so I was in, I was very happy to be a part of that. Um, thank the mayor, thank the staff for allowing me to go and be a part of a great, um, building of a great relationship from Pasco Peru to Pasco-Washington. So those are my reports for this week, so thank you.
Thank you. I will add, Chief, uh, Roski, thank you for helping organize the ride-alongs for council members that attended. Um, your department is always great. Chief Crowley, we were expecting to see you out there, but we will see you out there soon. And I know we did, um, you did participate in the family, family field day. Uh, just this past weekend, uh, some of your members were out there connecting with the community, and that's what you all do best, connect with the community and, uh, the children, and just bring those opportunities for everyone to participate. So thank you again for setting that up and for participating. With that, we go to item seven B, um, and we'll get a, uh, update on the Confederate Tribes of the Colville Reservation Pasco Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and evening council members. Um, we have, um, Confederate, Confederated Tribes of the Colville Reservation. They purchased, uh, land within the city of Pasco in two thousand nineteen. Uh, and in mid-two thousand nineteen, um, the tribal council and chairman extended invitation to the city council and staff to share information on the proposals for the newly, newly purchased land. Um, since then, um, we have, the city and the tribe have signed an agreement that established, uh, a government-to-government relationship, uh, between, uh, between us to collaborate on matters of mutual interest. The city and the Confederate Tribes of Colville Reservation have been working together since, and I'm happy to welcome Jared Michael Erickson and Cody DeSotell, chairman and executive director from the Confederate Tribes of Colville Reservation, who will provide us, uh, with a brief update on the Pasco Project. Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, thank you all. Are we gonna be three minutes too, or are we gonna? Okay, let's say, man, we're gonna be very quick here. Wow. Um, first, just do introductions, uh, Why Hostile Halt and Chase Wees, Wees Wa Wees. Hello, good day. Uh, my name is Jared Michael Erickson. Like she, uh, mentioned, I'm the chairman for the Colville Confederate Tribes. Uh, I used to be on that side of the table, so it's a little different, but it's good to be here. Um, Cody, want to introduce yourself real quick?
Cody DeSotell, Executive Director and Pasco Project Lead.
And I want to mention one thing. So the gentleman that was just up here presenting, I hope you guys do consider working and collaborating with him. I, recently, this is off-topic, but I heard him, so I, youth is very, very passionate about our youth. So I went to Iceland, I did Icelandic prevention more, I went to Iceland from, sent by the governor with a team, some of the state teams, some tribal representatives, anyways, a lot of that's taking away the, the risk factor for our kids, right? And giving them things to do, so I hope you guys consider, uh, his proposal and working with him to get more for your, our youth to do around Pasco, too. So I have a connection down here on my dad's side of the family, I have a lot of family that lives down here, too. So if you know any Ericksons, they might be related to me, but anyways, um, do we have our presentation if we want to get? Do you want to give a quick, brief?
Sure, so just to recap, because it's been a few years, some new faces at the table. So good to see those of you who've met, and nice to meet those of you we haven't met. Uh, been a lot of work done over the last couple of years developing that FEEDA trust application. And while we were going through that process, a lot of confidential information that we needed to make sure we appropriately vetted through Bureau of Indian Affairs and federal agencies that had to review this stuff. So thankfully, we submitted that application in early April and are working on a, a notice of intent for the federal register to start the NEPA process. So that means a lot of the stuff we've been working on is now public. So here we are to give you an update on where we are in the work we've done over the last couple of years and where we hope to be over the next couple of years.
All right, are you controlling the slides, then? All right. Um, so for those of you who don't know, the Colville Confederate Tribes, excuse me, are, uh, comprised of twelve different tribes. Uh, Moses Columbia, San Poiln, Espilliam, Met Howe, Inniak, Colville, Lake Swenatchee, Chief Joseph Ban, Nesburst. Some of you may know the Nesburst Tribe of Idaho, Chief Joseph Bans. Uh, they came up to the Colville Reservation to still practice their religion. Um, Palouse, which is this area that we're in, was part of the Palouse Territory, Okanagan, and Chelan. Um, as you see, we have land from, in British Columbia in the north, all the way down into, uh, the Willawa, down in Oregon, and some into Idaho, and, uh, most east from Washington, so a vast area, the, um, that we cover. The Pasco are traditional homelands of constituent tribes, including the Palouse. Go ahead and go on to the slide. So here is the one hundred and eighty-four acres that we purchased, um, in June of twenty nineteen. Some of you that, I don't know who was still all here at the time, I was on council at the time, but I was just a councilman. Now I'm chairman for the last year, and then re-elected and re-appointed as chairman again. Um, is investment totaling about ten point eight million dollars when we bought the property. Um, September, since September of twenty twenty, we purchased an additional ten-acre parcel nearby that cost another one point five million. Um, site is located on the northeastern portion of, uh, Pasco. As you leave three ninety-five going north, I'm sure most of you know where the property is now. Um, we kind of have a different, um, different maps here, so you can kind of see the idea of the, I don't know, do we control them? Yeah, so right here is the, the pointed out view or the zoomed-out view. Um, anything else you want to add on that, Cody?
Just that, the, the hundred and sixty-acre parcel.
Yep.
The larger one where the egg field is, that's the site for the gaming project. The other three proj, or parcels will go through a separate FEEDA trust process. If, if it doesn't need a gaming designation, there's two separate processes that the BIA has us work through.
It, and does that expedite the process for the smaller parcel then, because it's got a different process?
Typically, they're, they're quicker when they're not a gaming. Gaming designation is the one that takes a long time, that's a, a more stringent process. But yeah, the, they're still off reservation FEEDA trust application, so they do take longer than on reservation one, but they're, uh, they should be quicker than the gaming one, yes. Yeah. Do you want to go over the agreements since Billy?
Sure. So we've, we've met with all of the local municipalities' governments over the last few years, uh, getting feedback on what that project might look like, what the priorities were of the Pasco City Council, Chamber of Commerce, uh, general Tri-Cities area. And with that, tried to figure out how we fit into this community. So in those conversations, we've come to a number of agreements in principle or letters of intent that kind of define what that relationship will be, how we will work together, how we engage, how we collaborate on what build-out of this project will look like through time. So at this point, we've got the agreement in principle with the city of Pasco, a letter of intent with the Franklin County PUD, a cooperative agreement with the sheriff's office, a cooperative agreement with the Port of Pasco, and a municipal services agreement with the city of Pasco. So those are the start of what will ultimately be a full suite of agreements that we have for all of the services and things that we need down here, and then generally how we share in responsibilities and opportunities in the community.
And I believe the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, too, Billy, correct?
Pasco Chamber, Tri-City, Hispanic.
Okay. Thank you, Billy. Back to you, still.
So the, the boring part, the FEEDA trust process. I'll, I'll try to make this fairly brief, but still provide enough detail that you understand the process. So for the gaming designation, it requires two separate processes through Bureau of Indian Affairs. The first is list, well, the instructions, the process is defined under twenty-five CFR one fifty-one. So that application got submitted in early April, and we've made good progress on that faster than I expected. It's a sixteen-step process, but we're on about step eight or nine of that at this point. So making good progress, although that process will pause as we move into the two ninety-two application and NEPA evaluation. So the next step in the process will be a notice of intent that will get listed on the federal register that has been submitted. It's under review by Northwest Regional Office and will be reviewed by the Office of Indian Gaming, and ultimately, the Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs Office. Once that is done, we will go through a public scoping process. Uh, will include public meetings that we get feedback from the local community, and that will help inform the development of alternatives. So under NEPA, we need to have a, a justifiable range of alternatives, which will include a no action, if we do nothing, what we would consider a preferred alternative, what we want to do, and then, uh, at least one other alternative could be a minimized footprint, could be a bigger footprint. But, um, that will get informed by that public scoping process. Uh, timing-wise, the, we still have the guidance from the Trump administration that they have a year to finish those EIS documents. So once that gets posted on the federal register, the, the department will have about a year to get that EIS complete. Uh, we do have an environmental contractor on board that will help navigate that and will help provide documentation and horsepower to the bureau to make sure that we get that done in a timely manner. I'd also note that through this EIS process, that gives the public, all interested parties, an opportunity to comment. Um, this is largely a federal decision through most of the process, with the exception of the governor's concurrence. So any objections they hear, the federal government will have to respond to and consider. So any objections they hear, the federal government will have to respond to and consider in their decision. And again, through like any of you that have worked through a irregular NEPA process, it would be like seep on the state side. They they will take and consider all of those comments. The, once we have the draft EIS listed on the federal register, we can submit the two ninety-two application, which is the gaming designation. That one is reviewed by the Office of Indian Gaming, and then ultimately up for approval at the Assistant Secretary's level. And assuming we get a positive determination on that, that one will ultimately need the governor's concurrence, so. Uh they've got roughly a hundred and twenty days from the time we submit that application to make a decision at OIG. And then I think the governor has ninety days-ish to make that decision on his side, so that gives us some timeline for when we may see this get to the finish line. Uh again, it's a very federal process at this point, so it's pretty dependent on their ability to process things in a timely manner. But we're at a point in the process where there are some defined timelines on the time they have to respond to each of the subsequent documents that we'll submit. And I will say that we're, we're going to show the next few slides, kind of what we envision this potentially being, but all of those will be subject to. What public scoping feedback we get, what comments receive, any mitigations or environmental hazards that are identified as part of that NEPA process. So what we show you is kind of our tentative vision, but all subject to these processes.
Thanks, Cody. Alright, so there's uh some plans for a hundred and eight, a hundred and sixty acre parcel. Um we're looking at a full-service casino resort, three restaurants, a gaming floor, cocktail lounge, and a sports bar. The hotel will include indoor/outdoor pool, fitness center, enhanced with event center space. I'm not sure how well you guys can see this or not, but it's kind, we'll have a better view here coming up, this is the uh proposed piece and what we kind of envisioning right now. The casino or the hotel being on the left there, um casino being the main building in the middle.
So hotel on this side, casino and amenities here. And then again, aerial view, casino here, hotel here.
You can go ahead and go to the next one, we'll do some other views. So here's kind of the front and back. See as well, uh so we're fo- mainly focusing, I know there's, there's some questions on other things we want to do in the property. But for this process, uh we're focusing on just on the casino right now, because if we, if anything is to be changed within that, it essentially could well, yeah, it's kind of what.
Start adding things or subtracting things, we've we've got to move forward with one proposal.
Because we've heard from the city council about other things that they would like to, you know, work or collaborate on, so we're still, that's still in the back of our mind, we want to move forward with those when the time comes. But right now, we're focused simply on this and getting this uh converted, so. Oh, uh so, um yeah, sorry, um during the uh um construction phase. Um we're, it's projected that we're thinking about a generator approximately a couple thousand direct and indirect jobs. Um and several thousand direct and indirect jobs over the operations over a ten-year period, so. Can't speak to exact numbers yet, we just have some ideas, but it should bring a lot of jobs there, which I think, I was, I think the city of Pasco would be very thankful for, and all of us will. So we'll have a, probably have a lot of our membership moving down here as well to be working here, so.
So just final thoughts, um wanted to give a progress update, again, it's been a while. A lot of work has gone in with a number of different feasibility studies, a lot of work with federal agencies, a a lot of waiting on federal agencies to get documents reviewed. But thankfully, at a point where we can share more, and that's been something we've been looking forward to for a long time, um have been. Waiting for this opportunity, because we we talked a number of years ago at this point about what next steps look like. And I know the question we often got was, when can we start, when do you plan on starting? And and now we're at that point where we've got some semi-definitive timelines on when that can happen, so this is that time we need to re-engage. Talk about what the goals are of the city of Pasco, how we fit into those goals, and then what build-out of this project might look like. So in addition to the engagement we have here and with the other municipalities, what does that look like generally in the community? So we've got Billy Gunn down here, he works with a number of different intergovernmental groups and just. I'm not sure who all Billy works with, it's a lot of people, but um continue that engagement, so we understand what the priorities are. What's important to the city of Pasco and how we incorporate those things into our project development. And then some of the, some of the other benefits, looking at what the economic growth for the tri-cities area are, it could be. When we look at, say, a comparable project of, say, Northern Quest and Spokane, these types of projects tend to become big economic drivers in the places they're developed. They provide a lot of jobs, a lot of additional revenue and visitation to the economy, so we think that that's likely going to happen here as well. So there should be a lot of benefits, not just to the city of Pasco, but the greater tri-cities area. Um increased revenue to help bridge the funding gap at Nesbilum and the services we provide for our membership. So right now, the reservation is located on the two most economically depressed counties in the state, so it's really hard to generate revenue. Uh we're largely dependent on funding that we get from the federal government, and if we look at what tribes are funded at under the Bureau of Indian Affairs or IHS. It's a fraction of what other federal agencies receive for the same responsibility, so to make sure that we meet those management goals. Or service goals that we have for our membership and our resources, we need extra funding to accomplish those, because the federal government just frankly doesn't, doesn't have the appropriations to do that. Um we also think that will be helpful for local economies, again, what we've seen in other comparable markets is that. These kind of projects become huge economic drivers and generate a lot of revenue for the local community as well. And then increased contributions back to its members and the community, so as we generate more revenue on both sides. This is something that should help fund priorities on, but both on the tribal priority list and the city's priority list. And generally, what what does that look like going forward? Um through some of those agreements, it may mean additional staff for the police, for the fire departments. Um additional loading capacity for the public utility district, so just general growth of the area because of this project. And then the opportunities that we have to continue that growth looking forward.
That's our last slide, wasn't it? Kind of open it up for any questions you might have, and um prior to this, we've about the sheriff's office as well to re-engage. And um talking with them as well and what that looks like move forward, and like talk with the chief some afterwards too, or sometime to get um some more input from them as well. But we understand there are a lot of these come, you know, as you take this off the tax base, you pay stuff, or you help with contributing lieu of taxes. And so we want to make sure how we can contribute to make sure that all things are being funded accordingly. With the police, right, as a police force, what does that look like? Is that us helping fund positions for the site? Or how how is that, what does MOUs look like? How, we're not sure how that looks yet completely, but we're going to start working on those agreements more, uh more in depth, so. We'll open up for, if you guys have any questions for any of us.
Thank you, thank you, this is excellent information. Before I open it to Q and A, do you want to add that Billy Gunn is. Maybe too involved in the community, he works with a lot of nonprofits, he works with. Uh our police department, fire department, he works across the board with everybody. If you say Billy Gunn, do you know Billy Gunn? I think you're going to say, oh yeah, I do know him, I've seen him, I've met him, oh, he's helped me. Uh so thank you, Billy, for being out in the community and for everything that you've done for the community so far, and I know there's uh more to come. So with that. Yes, perfectly, yes. Uh Councilman Milne, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just had kind of a quick question, uh trying to get the idea more on your operation. So I know you go to like other casinos and they have like, you know, events where people are singing or whatever. Are you guys have any plans for that as far as having like concerts or anything like that? Is that any in the works with, I know you guys run other casinos as well?
Y- yeah, so this, I mentioned there's an event center, that kind of be kind of what we're, we're looking at, something similar, I know. I think that's been a big thing that people are looking at, I mean, they see like Northern Quest, right, they see that type of, I guess, concert venue, stuff like that, right? Like it's something we're, the future looking at, I think, because that'll bring, especially down here, because you guys get such nicer weather even than Spokane does, but. That's something we're definitely looking at.
And then I assume you're going to have like restaurants, are you going to have anything like Native American, like where you could go and have like Native American food, or?
Guess that's a conversation we haven't got too in-depth about yet, but that's definitely an idea, I know there's that Indigenous eats, I think it's called in Spokane. That um a lot of people have been uh kind of crazed over up in these, our neck of woods up there, that uh that's something I guess we could, we consider. We haven't yet, I'm sure we will on some level, but um we've focused on this fee to trust process so much, we haven't gotten to the management and the, in the weeds yet completely yet, but.
Okay, and then.
There's one thing I would add to that, is that through that NEPA process, NEPA has language that you you can't be pre-decisional. So most of what you we develop will be based on that public scoping process, and what we define as potential environmental. Either obligations or mitigations that we need to to take account of. So a lot of that will be informed, and I think once we have some handle on what those environmental compliance responsibilities are. And what flexibility we have, that's when we'll come back and start having those conversations about what what the success of this project will look like. With with our partners here in Pasco area.
Yeah, I know I've been to other places and you've had like buffalo burgers or stuff like that, and it's always good to have like that kind of meat, something different than what you get at the regular restaurants. Then I guess my final question was, I know you have those other three pro- properties, which you said would go a lot faster in the process. What's the idea for that? I know I'd heard one time that maybe a gas station or or something along that venue, do you guys have any idea on that, or are you guys still working on that?
So that one, it still have that, the convenience store gas station plan for the six point five eight acres. Um no immediate plans for the other ones other than potentially parking. That one, under normal circumstances, usually takes about a year. Again, it's it's a very federal-heavy process at this point, so it's largely dependent on what staff the Bureau of Indian Affairs have to process this application. Respond to comments or objections they might have, so we hope a year, but again, primarily depending on what the federal government has capacity to do.
Okay, thank you.
I will just add that we're not afraid to be the squeaky wheel and be where we need to be and talk to who we need to talk to, because we're trying to get this, want this process. Go as quickly as we can as well, not, you know, I I know the city of Pasco wants it, but we want it for you guys and for us as well, so we'll. We're trying to, but we all know that the federal government doesn't, we're at the quickest speed at times, or does the state or the tribal, so we're doing our best.
Any other questions, um Mayor Bratton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Bruson, thank you so much for the presentation, uh it's great to have an update on on the conversations we had a few years ago. And knowing that there is plenty of work being done, it's even, you know, in spite of the the pandemic and such, so. I I think one of the things that we're really excited about, is I'm very mu- very excited about is is the additional community partnership, well, you know, as. Pasco is is such a diverse community, and and that's one thing that's, you know, of course, we're always welcoming for for others to come in and, or re-come in, I suppose. Um and and join our community, and so um I think we're really excited for that. And I think that as we're, as we're having some of these conversations in terms of of what we can do as a, as a partnership, um above and beyond just this project. I think there's plenty of opportunities for us to continue to, not just cultural exchanges, but also to see what else we can do to um. To share each other's talents and 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 skill sets, so. Gave me a heart attack there. So anyway, so I I, so above and beyond just this project, you know, I I really appreciate the um, the the Colville Tribes. A participation in so many of our cultural events and other events, and I look forward to continued um engagement as we move forward. Thank you so much.
And we'd definitely like to be, as we get more milestones within the fee to trust process, we'd like to come present to you guys as often as you want. But as those milestones hit, I think that'd be a good time to give you guys any updates that we can uh provide to you, so.
Any other comments, uh Councilman Serrano?
Just want to make sure I heard correctly, um obviously, a lot of scoping occurs throughout the NEPA process. Did I hear you say you've submitted your notice of intent? Uh what, like what, where, did I hear that status incorrectly?
No, that that's accurate, it was submitted to the regional office.
Okay.
Last week.
Okay, so last week, alright.
Yep, and they're now reviewing that at the regional office, from there it'll go to the Office of Indian Gaming, and ultimately to the Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs Office for review.
Okay, and then we'll open it up to the draft EIS and that fun process.
That's next.
Alright, well, I look forward to seeing what you guys have, and and hopefully to, we'll continue this partnership and. Uh comments we have will, will bear fruit hopefully, ho- hopefully help you develop a great project, and we know you've got it, but. It's always good to have boots on the ground here. Thank you.
So again, no other questions or comments? Thank you for the presentation, we do look forward to the plans moving forward, possibly faster. And thanks again for the update for our new uh council members uh up here. Um thank you again, uh Chairman and Director for your presentation, and Billy, thank you for everything you do in the community.
Lynn Lynn, thank you.
That, with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, item number eight, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there too. Unlisted, we'll move on to item number nine, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings. Uh nine A, uh ordinance number forty-six seventy-two, approval of Mendoza rezone from C one to C two. And Director Gonzalez, actually.
Yeah, if you don't mind if I can get it started, uh again, this is a quasi judicial matter, uh as we all know, that's a hearing to render final decision on materials that'll be presented. Uh it's defined as a proceeding which the council defines the legal rights, duties, and privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies, uh so each hearing must be fair in three respects, both our form, substance, and appearance. Uh council members should consider whether they have any potential conflicts as follows, demonstrated bias or for or against any of the parties. Any direct or indirect financial interest, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing. Whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. Uh and finally, any other conflict that the council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and partially. Uh if any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. Hearing none, uh if there are any members of public, so you can disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings. Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you, with that, Director Gonzalez.
Uh good evening, Mayor, members of council, uh this rezone request is for a property located at the southeast corner of five two eight West Clark Street. Uh the site is located within the downtown Pasco Land Use Overlay District, which was approved uh last spring. And uh the request is to change the zoning from the current C one retail business district to the C two central business district zone. Uh the site is just uh over a third of an acre. And uh it's been repurposed from its original drive-through bank structure and has since been utilized for various per- pers- uh purposes. Such as accommodating restaurants and retail establishments. Uh the site was the subject of a rezone back in nineteen ninety-six from C two to C one. Um and that application, uh this application uh for the rezone would redesignate the site back to the C tone classification. Making use of a twenty twenty-one ordinance uh that reallowed various uses in the C tone zoning districts such as sports bars. Uh public hearing was conducted by the Pasco Hearing Examiner on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And on June twenty-third, uh the Hearing Examiner issued a recommendation of approval for the rezone. Uh staff concurs uh with the Hearing Examiner decision and adds that the rezone is in conformance with the general policies of the comprehensive plan. And that the application also also furthers the implementation of the recently approved downtown Pasco ma- master plan. Which emphasizes the recruitment of businesses and the diversity of business types downtown. Uh no appeals or public comments opposing the request have been received by staff, and with that, happy to answer any questions I can, thank you.
Thank you for that, Director, do we have any questions or comments from council, um council, um Mayor Bratton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Bruson, um thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for the um um for the the brief overview of this. Um no particular comments on this particular rezone, um I would note that this is not an unusual set of circumstances. Where we have any individual lot that has specific things tied to it restricting its use as it currently exists today. I imagine that we have a number of other um lots that have, have all sorts of strange things happening on it with um in our downtown region. Um I would like to understand, um Director Gonzalez. Is there a way for us as a legislative body to propose a rezone of multiple properties? Um I would hate to put every property owner in the downtown core through this process. If there is a way we can expedite and facilitate this in in conjunction and compliance and uh with our master plan. And our um, you know, comprehensive plan.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we we did some similar effort last year with the uh conference plan amendments, where we did area-wide land use uh changes. And we can certainly uh uh our code certainly allows us to do the same with the zone as well.
I'd be very interested and supportive of us taking an effort to remove the burden from our downtown property owners. Assuming, of course, we're very careful not to inflict new burdens upon them in our process. That's all I have, I'm, thank you.
Any other comments from anyone else? Seeing none, I look forward to seeing this on our next uh meeting.
Ma- Mayor Bruson, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number four six seven two, approving a rezone and amending the the zoning classification of certain real property. Located on the southeast corner of West Clark Street and North Fifth Avenue at five twenty-eight West Clark Street. In Pasco, Franklin County, Washington, from C one to C two, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campos, uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance number forty-six seventy-three, amending the Pasco Municipal Code, Chapter nine. Point forty-five related to the Blake Fix, the Washington State and Gross Second Substitute Senate Bill fifty-five thirty-six. And Mr. Ferguson.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, so essentially, yeah, this is the uh what's generally referred to as the quote Blake Fix. Uh the legislature, as we've talked about numerous times, uh uh decided to uh be able to to re-implement uh the ability for local governments. To uh uh enforce drug uh both use and possession. Uh this is uh really as about as simple as as we can do it. Uh and uh we really relied on our prosecutors to make sure that the. uh, we really relied on our prosecutors to make sure that the code provisions that we have that we needed to repeal in their entirety are taken out. Uh, and then we're adopting all of the RCW references by reference. So, uh, there's a, a Supreme Court case that says, Washington State Supreme Court case that says, uh, local governments can't enforce RCWs unless they've adopted them, uh, by reference or in, in whole, uh, but they have to be adopted. So that's what this is attempting to do. I'll try to answer any questions I can, but it's, uh, just pretty straightforward in terms of repealing what we've had on our books, uh, for both, uh, any kind of drug use, uh, at the local level or, and, um, public drug use and then, um, uh, possession, so. Um, and we're adopting the, uh, the state law, the, the bill that was passed, uh, in, in summary.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions, remarks, Councilman Campos?
Just a quick remark, and I think, Mr. Ferguson, you could probably help clarify for me, but if this council decides and, and wants to apply more attention to make amendments, the direct, the correct course of action for us would be to direct our consultants with uh, forgot the name of their company, Holly and Brianna.
Gordon Thomas.
Gordon Thomas Honeywell, to show what our interests are and how we want to revise this, potentially in the future, that's our correct course of action is to, is to get those guys involved and tell them what our desires are.
That's correct, that, that would be my recommendation. Uh, there's certainly nothing that, uh, the preemption for, uh, the drug paraphernalia portion is complete, so both, uh, the, the restriction as the law reads, as well as the penalty, those are all preempted. Uh, with regard to the possession, uh, the penalty is completely restricted. And the only, so essentially what that means is, is that you can do less, uh, and you, you don't have to adopt all of it. But, uh, if you do, you're, uh, obviously not taking advantage of all the opportunities that, uh, the state law provides. So any changes to the, to state law would be best used, uh, through that avenue.
And Councilmember Campos, uh, we have just started, uh, setting our legislative agenda, so this would be a good addition to that, if that is what the council desires.
Thank you.
Just recap, like, again, I think, as we listened to Mr. Ferguson give initial presentation, and we listened to prosecutor give initial, uh, his co- his take on everything, I think that there was some questions and concerns from this council, and that's why I'm bringing this up is for those of us who still have lingering questions or want to take action, I think, um, I would, I would support this as a group effort to get Holly and Brianna on board to set legislative priority.
Thank you, thank you for that. Uh, Mayor Potemaloni?
Yes, I'll just build on that, um, on that point, um. Again, just as a reminder, I serve on the Legislative Priorities Committee for the Association of Washington Cities, so helping set that legislative agenda for the entire state organization. And that is one of the items that is on our honored priority list, um, is that the Blake Fix needs fixes. Um, and the Blake Fix needs funding. Uh, those are the two things that are really key to being able to successfully implement with something in this arena, so, um, so this is something that, um, I believe the large city advisory committee, as well as the, um, Legislative Priorities Committee that I've tagged in, and I, I would, I would agree that, um, I think that's something that we should, um, I think a lot of our legislative priorities this year should be in line with the rest of the state, and we should be pushing alongside our, um, our fellow cities, um, and getting some of these things resolved like the Blake Fix. So just wanted to clarify and add on to that, um, Councilman Campos.
Thank you. Uh, before I go back to you, Councilman Campos, uh, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ferguson, is this, as you understand, consistent with what we've heard across the, uh, I guess throughout the Bay County region of Benton and Franklin Counties, various cities?
Uh, yes, we've, uh, copied this from several other cities, so it should be the exact same thing, so.
Okay.
Except for the things that we're repealing in our, that are in our code, uh, we're, we're trying to all stay together on this one.
That's, that's what I had anticipated, I just wanted to confirm, this was execution, thank you.
Councilman Campos?
This is a, I'm gonna pose a question just openly, if if it would make sense, I know the last legislative session we had, it seemed as if this was not a priority, this was kind of zero dark thirty when this came out. And so the, the question I'm gonna pose is, and I'm gonna take a play out of Councilman Serrano's book, is if we as a council draft a resolution, would that help put a little bit more oomph behind, uh, an ask to our legislative people, and I guess Brianna and Holly might be the only ones to answer that or staff, but just wanted to pose the question, we can think on that and go from there.
If I may, um, we, we adopt our legislative priorities through resolution, so that is our direction to staff and to our consultants, so when we're at this spot, we will, um, historically, we have always adopted that by resolution, um, and we can make sure that that's, I think, appropriately emphasized without, um, any change to our existing process.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Uh, Councilman Campos, do you, are you, do you agree with that response? Do we need further discussion? Okay, and so with that, um, can I get a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-seven-three, amending the title of the City of Pasco Municipal Code, Chapter nine point four-five, offenses involving drugs, amending section nine point four-five point zero-four-zero, repealing sections nine point four-five point oh-one-oh, oh-one-two, or oh-oh-two, oh-two-oh, there we go. Oh-three-oh, oh-five-oh, oh-five-one, oh-five-two, oh-six-oh, oh-seven-oh, oh-eight-oh, oh-eight-five, oh-nine-oh, one-hundred, one-ten, and one-thirty, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we'll go on to item number C, ordinance, ordinance number forty-six seventy-four, issuance of twenty-twenty-three bond, limited tax obligation, the LTGO bond, and we do not have Director Buckley.
If I can introduce or reintroduce, uh, Griselda Garcia, who is our finance manager, uh, a key member of the finance team, um, and we're really lucky to have her, she has extensive municipal experience, and, uh, I like to joke with her that at one time she used to audit us, so that's, uh, that's something that is a lingering, um, tension, I would say. Um, but Darcy Buckley, our finance, uh, director, is on a much deserved and needed vacation, and, um, Griselda will be presenting you, um, our, uh, bond issuance.
Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, so we're, uh, here to, uh, seek approval to proceed with, uh, the issuance of two, uh, bonds. Uh, one is a, uh, LTGO bond, and the other is a, uh, revenue bond, uh, with refunding. Uh, for, and Director Buckley, uh, was here on the twenty-fourth and went over the two issuances. Um, so just to summarize, uh, what she went over at that time. The LTGO bond is, uh, the amount is not to exceed fourteen million, and, um, the estimated interest rate for that right now is, uh, four point two-two, uh, which results in a uh, estimated average debt service payment of one point one million, um, and the, uh, there's a couple, there's several projects, but a couple of them are, uh, the Fire Station eighty-five and, uh, improvements to the Giza Stadium. And for the revenue bond, uh, that one is not to exceed thirty-eight million, uh, and the interest rate for that is estimated to be four point seven-seven with a average annual payment amount of, uh, two point five million. And then again, that covers several projects for utilities, um, and some of the most notable ones are utilities in the Broadmoor area and, um, upgrades and improvements to PWRF. Um, also, uh, five million of that is to refund a two thousand thirteen, uh, bond. And both are scheduled to, uh, to go out, uh, to bond sell and, uh, proceeds are scheduled to be received, uh, in late, uh, September.
Any questions? Thank you. Do we have any questions? For this very thorough explanation, thank you. Thank you for the thorough explanation. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, thank you again. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barahas, and these are the longest motions I think I've ever had to read, so thank you all for that. I move to adopt ordinance number four-three-seven-four, relating to contracting indebtedness, uh, providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed fourteen million dollars aggregate principal amount of limited tax general obligation bonds to provide funds for, for design, construction, and equipping of Fire Station number eighty-five, completion of improvements to, of the animal control annex building, including furniture, fixtures, and equipment, improvements at the Giza Stadium, and capital improvements at, at the memorial pool complex, and other capital purposes as deemed necessary and advisable by the city, and to pay the cost of issuance and sale of the bonds, fixing or setting parameters with respect to certain ta- terms and covenants of the bonds, appointing the city's designated representative to approve the final terms of the sale of the bonds, and providing for other related matters, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Brown, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously, thank you. That was a long, uh, motion, but hold your breath, another one's coming. Uh, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, ordinance number forty-six seventy-five, issuance of twenty-twenty-three bonds revenue and refunding. And again, we have Griselda.
Sorry, I kind of, uh, combined the description there, but both of, um, the aforementioned description was for this one as well.
Okay. So no further report? Okay, no further report. Do we have any questions on this particular ordinance number forty-six seventy-five? Seeing none, can I get an, uh, motion?
Yes, Mayor Barahas, I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-seven-five, relating to the waterworks utility of the city, specifying, adopting, and ordering the carrying out of a system or plan of additions to, and betterments and extensions of the waterworks utility, providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed thirty-eight million dollars aggregate principal amount of water and sewer improvements, and refunding revenue bonds to pru- to provide funds to pay, to pay or reimburse all or a portion of, of the cost of carrying out the plans, plan of additions, refund and redeem, uh, outstanding water and sewer revenue bonds for the city, and pay costs, the cost of issuance and sale of the bonds and the administrative costs of the refunding, fixing or setting parameters with respect to certain terms and covenants of the bonds, appointing the city's designated representative to approve the final terms of the sale of the bonds, and providing for related matters, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Okay, we have a motion, do we, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that, thank you for lengthy motions. Um, we'll move right along to item number ten, unfinished business, none listed. Item eleven, new business, none listed. Item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. Direct, uh, no, not directly.
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
Do we have any miscellaneous discussion, uh, Councilman Serrano?
Yeah, I just do wanna, um, I know that I've, I've had folks reach out about the cannabis retail that's going in on Road Ninety specifically, because that's the walking path for a middle school. I'll let you know that I've heard your concerns, there is nothing that we can do at this point to modify that. Uh, maybe a petition to the Liquor Cannabis Board as a constituent might be an option, but, uh, beyond that, there's nothing other than hear you and, uh, reach out to the rest of the city council and certainly express your opinions to them. But, uh, there is, there's, that ship sailed, so I do understand the concerns and I feel for you, but, uh, there's nothing that can be done.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Brown?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Just wanna go back to the Clubhouse Sports, um, Academy that was presented to us, um, first thing I'm gonna say, good job at putting this all together. One of my questions to be more specific, and hopefully I didn't miss it, what is the specific ask? What, 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 what can we do, what can we consider to, to really make this work? Um, I looked through the pamphlet, I don't know if you can take the podium and answer those questions?
Go ahead and just take the podium.
And while you're coming forward, I think this presentation is great. The first question was, what is the ask specifically that is gonna be needed from us to consider, and then two, um, all year round, is this going to fit winter, spring, summer, and fall, where there's always something for our kids to do, um, for each season?
Alright, so the ask is to, uh, partner with the city parks and wrecks and become, um, an asset as far as a location. Uh, I'm, I've spoken with a lot of community members, we've had Zoom meetings. Um, I actually was a part of the survey that was sent out today to families in the city of Pasco. And as we spoke about on our Zoom meeting, the issue was convenience factor uh, for parents, for working parents who got more than one kid who plays multiple sports. Um, that was an issue, cost. Um, we wanna work with the city of Pasco Parks and Wrecks to allow facility that's very, uh, light on the pockets for parents in a sense. Um, so we asked that, one, we are, uh, considered partners with the city parks and wrecks, uh, and also allow us to get the funding necessary to sponsor kids in our community who can't afford to, those gym prices, who can't afford, uh, the, the access to sports facilities, our professional uh, sports training. Me, myself, I am a trainer, um, I own my business partner with Clubhouse Sports Academy, and even working with a lot of young athletes, it's hard to tell an athlete, our kid, period, no, because of funding purposes. Um, so my ask is to partner with the city, come up with a plan that not only, uh, benefits these, uh, kids, but also come up with a plan that can save these parents both time, uh, money, and be an asset to keep some of these kids out of trouble, which I'm pretty sure the chief wouldn't mind. Uh, getting these kids off the street and having them a place to go. Uh, whether we set up after-school transportation where buses come from schools straight to the center, um, that's something that we'll get into as far as details further on down the road. I do wanna offer this, uh, opportunity because Clubhouse Sports Academy is a, a very large facility. This facility can be used all year long. A big issue in the Tri-Cities alone is indoor facilities and have the capacity to host more than twenty people at one time. We have over thirty-nine thousand square feet of space, I mean, just pure space. A lot of y'all have been to the Happy Center, uh, Happy Event Center, it was where the rodeo was at. Uh, we're in there, we got two basketball courts, we got soccer field. We got all this indoor, uh, necessities for young athletes to use. And we wanna fill it up with labs, we wanna fill it up with kids, we wanna fill it up with sweat, of course, 'cause it's a fitness center. Um, but we really want to be able to, uh, offer programs, activities, soccer night, basketball night, whatever it is that we can, uh, we wanna offer that all year round, whether we do tournaments for AAU, which is big here in the Tri-Cities, uh, we're right there around the corner from the Death Devils Field and all those fields around there. So by partnering, uh, with us, we can create programs, activities, tournaments that attract even more people to the area and also give our kids something to do and not be so, uh, cost burden to parents here in the community.
So I have a quick follow-up question just before I turn it back to you. Have you spoken with Director Rice, who is in a, in charge of Parks and Rec?
I have not spoken to, uh, sorry, spoken to Director Rice at all. I've definitely, this is a major reason why I came tonight, was to network and talk to people, um, because I'm very passionate, as you can tell. Very passionate what I do, I've always been into our kids, that's the reason of the Big Bro Joe Foundation. Um, but I definitely wanna work with the city, because our youth, they need somebody to speak for them. And whether that was placed on my heart or not, this is where I'm at today, and, um, I really wanna vouch and say that this is an opportunity for us to really do something and help cater to our youth here in the Tri-Cities. I'm a former Benton County Juvenile Attention Relief Officer, I've seen recidivism, and it's always because they have nothing to do. Um, this is an opportunity for us as collectively to address an, a issue and a problem and move it forward in the future. Um, families are growing, as you can tell, city of Pasco is one of the fastest-growing cities, that mean a lot of kids is coming. Let's do our part to set up a program br- right now to last as far as for the future and local jeopardy purposes.
Thank you. So before you leave today, uh, Mr. Thornton, if you could connect with our director, uh, Director Jesse Rice, um, and he'll have a good conversation with you. I'll turn it back to Councilman Brown.
Councilman Brown is done because Mayor Blanche took my thunder. She gave you Mr. Rice over there, Director Rice. Brown has no more, except congratulations, I think this is awesome. Our youth, our children, it's our future, our future councilmen, councilwomen, um, director of great organizations like yours. So let's love on them enough to be the voice that they need to have a full year of activity, which will relieve a lot off the parents.
Yes, sir.
Um, so we're looking forward to that, so hopefully this, this great collaboration is gonna take place and we'll just keep working together.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilman Campos?
Believe Mayor Potemaloni had his mic on way before I did. I believe Mayor Potemaloni had his mic on way before I did.
Way before you? We'll turn it back to, I don't have my screen that tells me who was first, so Mayor Potemaloni, go ahead.
Thanks. And I don't have any further questions.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Okay.
I do want to just bring to the council's attention is that, that the facility they're talking about is in control of the Franklin County. Happo Center is under their full administrative control. So we as a City of Pasco don't have any control over the facility itself, but there is a larger dynamic of what we're discussing about and how that facility moves forward as Councilmember Campos and I serve on the Happo Center Advisory Board. So there's, there's an overall more complicated picture than just whether or not this is what's right for our kids and that we as a City of Pasco are not in full control over. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that there's more of a dynamic than, than what's just best for our kids. And so, yeah, so just wanted to, to let you all know that the county has a big role in whatever conversations we can have about this. And the, the other thing I was going to bring up is I, I did receive an email, I think we all did, about a potentially abused dog that was picked up by our animal control. And I'm, I'm very interested to understand, how does our animal control work with our police officers and the, or whoever's, was, would be investigating potential animal abuse? So how does our, our animal control, if they have a, if they see a potential case, do we have a, a process for which that can be forwarded or recommended for investigation?
I can't speak directly to the case you're speaking about or that, that the email we did get, but yes, our animal control does work with our police department or the police departments that we support when needed. But generally, those neglect cases are handled in-house and they do work with the prosecutors directly.
Be great. I would, I'd like to make sure that we have that well documented, understood by, by everyone. This is something that's really important and we have a very engaged part of our constituency that really cares about this and wants to know this is being done right. So I'd appreciate if we could get a written follow-up as to what exactly our process and procedure is, or is it, or is it very much a, you know, kind of an institutional knowledge one? I'd like to, to understand that better if at all possible. Thank you.
Deputy City Manager?
I just wanted to say that Director Rice has definitely given me a follow-up and it's been waiting in my inbox. So that'll be out to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Any more comments? Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to share with Clubhouse Sports that, you know, funding allocations from the city, that's not always easy to go through. It's not something that we as the city can just cut a check, but there are grant opportunities out, so you want to pay attention to the Community Development Block Grant. Those are things that you guys can apply for. Those are things that you guys might be able to get some, some assistance of. Obviously, it depends on whether or not you meet the criteria set forward through the Planning Commission. Director Gonzalez, can you elaborate a little bit on some of the requirements for the Community Development Block Grants?
Yeah, so the Community Development Block Grant Program allocates funds that we receive on a yearly basis, primarily for the use of housing stability redevelopment opportunities in, in distressed areas of the city. So as more of us emphasize, weighted value on projects or programs that support new housing as aligned with the home program that's administered by the three municipalities here in the region with their block grant administrators. The cycle for the two thousand twenty-four has already ended, but we will be back in less than a year, back to the Planning Commission, out to the community, and certainly back to this council with the application for that one.
Thank you for the refresher. Doesn't sound like they would necessarily meet the criteria unless they could figure out a way to fit fitness into housing, but regardless, you know, it's just, it's, it's a difficult process to often just provide funding. So just keep that in the back of your mind when you're asking for stuff. To Councilman Brown's part, you know, come, come correct with your ask and we'll try to take care of you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brown.
I forgot, so I turned it off. It's back. Did I just forget it again? Oh, back to the dog shelter and the email that we received. So I'm going to pose this way outside of the dais. So once a report goes forward of abuse, is it going directly to the animal shelter itself? Is it coming directly to the city, city staff, or council? And then the follow-up time on that, is it two days, three days? Is it a week that constituents should expect to hear something back as of, this is just a conversation. I know the right people aren't here to answer it. How was, how was that directed? Because the way that the email came, it was quite concerning. And to, to return that animal back to those conditions is very alarming if that was going to be the case, but here we are. This came out, this email, we get so many. I don't know, last week, I'll just call it that. We get a lot of emails. But the return around time is, what does it look like?
I think this case has, this specific case we're talking about has went on for a while and it has been investigated by our animal control officers and I did receive a report from our lead animal control officer and they believe that their choice in placing that animal back with the owner was justified based on the case material they have found, which I can tell you included research with an independent vet as well as prior research into medical treatment that animal had received. And actually created the situation that it is in now. So the reason that animal was placed, it was the best location for it to be for potentially its last few days or last few weeks as it's working through its medical issues. I don't have a reason on why it's escaping or why it's been out, where they found it twice. It's been found by the community versus an animal control officer, which would result in a pickup or site, but I can tell you that it wasn't care and our lead animal control officer was very passionate about her decision and the information she found and, and the decision they made to place the animal back with the owner.
I appreciate the response and I guess just a lot of the constituencies come in all different kind of ways and sometimes it's a little bit inflated, but doesn't mean the, the passion of the causes is not real. But is there public, somewhere public they can go to get an update on that particular situation or any situation where it's deemed animal abuse or it?
Um, I think it, and it, I'd say yes. Of course, there's always our public records request route that's available to anyone, which is, you know, a long process to go about. We also have our, every other month, animal control authority meetings, which sometimes we discuss those cases or public is welcome to come out. We do have a public comment session. I also normally end that meeting and do a question, answer session with the public as well, where we can be a little more directly involved with them. So yeah, multiple ways like that, but it, it's, it's similar that there are a lot of cases and there's a lot of people's names involved with those, so it's also not necessarily directly disclosable where we want to protect those that are involved in those cases as well. So not something we directly publish to a website or anything like that, but something that depending on the level of information, what it is, we either disclose as we're talking here or maybe have to go through a public records redaction process or something like that.
No, that's informal, definitely good information and education, so it's always good to have the information to share, to redirect. That's not happening a lot, so now we have something to redirect them to get the needed information. I don't think the pertinent information is always what you want to give out. The safety and the care for the animal has been given and we can share that and that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Sure. And I, and I will follow up, though. We do have a very passionate staff that is worried about neglect and I have seen officers teary-died themselves over actual neglect cases that we're trying to resolve or remove an animal or do something with. So I think in their, in this case, based on, based on their knowledge, their awareness that they felt that they've made the right decision with that dog, but we do have other animals that we do take more action with.
Dog, appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again, Director Rice, for further clarification on that situation. Are there any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Chief Rosky, item number thirteen, executive session. There's no need for executive session this evening. And so it is night, it is eight twenty-one and this meeting is officially adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.